Um, something might come to you that you um, kind of wish you would have said, or you, you know, you didn't think about it at the time, or you want to share. Um, or you may even have question about something that was said, um, and if you have any of that and you want to um, you know, you, you can um, bring that up right now.
Well, brother teacher, I just wanted to mention that, you know, that this has been rich and it continues to be rich. And um, and I, I, I just want to just to, to tell you what I know from experience and also what I've learned from being taught this. Is that um, the lessons continue in, in the application. So as we not only just kind of try to remember these, they actually get reinforced and uh, uh, when we apply and when we walk in these ways, these scriptures actually open up to us. And so that's, that is when um, the con- the conceptual are us kind of saying, alright, that makes sense. It really makes sense and it gets deeper um, when we start um, actually applying these to our lives.
Amen. Amen pastor, you're right on me.
Okay, alright, alright. Anybody else want to add something?
And that kind of goes, and I, I'll finish that too, is that, that kind of goes since I got an amen on that one. It, it, it really goes through all scripture. Having just a intellectual or philosophical handle on the Bible is not near enough.
Absolutely, amen.
Amen. Okay. Anybody else want to add something?
Things that folk, folks like, I never see that, or I didn't, I didn't get that. Only because, you know, you are, you fishing without water. When you take it to the water, you learn what swimming is. And that's, you know, I don't care how many YouTube things you look at, I don't care. As you put your head up, is proverbs and uh, the rest of the scriptures. They are, you know, they, the, you really understand it m- more.
Amen. Man. Okay, alright, thank you for that. Is, is anyone else got something they want to add? Okay. Alright. Go ahead, somebody do you want to say something? Okay. If not, we're gonna, we'll, we'll move on. We'll start in verse eight. Um, we'll do eight and nine. When a king sits on, sits on his throne to judge, he windows out all evil with his eyes. Who can say, I have kept my heart pure? I am clean and without sin. Okay, class. Anybody want to start discussion on those verses? Okay.
I just, I just wanted to mention that when uh, oftentimes, and, and it repeats sometimes in this uh, in proverbs, and brother teacher, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, in my studies that I, I think I remember is that when they mentioned the king, um, that uh, this is a um, a political person who is actually in charge or in a practical, real world situation. However, um, you know, the, um, the, all kingdoms have similarities.
Yes.
And so we can use some of this information to actually know how to in- interact in the kingdom that's being built by.
I think you're breaking, you, you're going in and out.
Oh, I think somebody's putting on their earphones, maybe got my, but oh. Okay. Hello, I, I think Ovi is trying to put on her ear pods and they're trying to pick up on mine, so I'm eliminate hers from that and I'll apologize.
Okay. Alright. Anyone else got something they want to add? Um, I'm not, we'll give him a minute, I'm not sure if he's finished.
I'm sorry, could you reread the verse please?
Um, verse eight and nine, it says, when a king sits on his throne to judge, he windows out all evil with his eyes. Who can say, I have kept my heart pure? I am clean and without sin.
Ovi, you can try now, I, I took your device out.
Okay. Pastor, were you, were you finished, or you, you haven't, where you want to add?
Uh-oh. Um, uh, no, I, I, I just um, I wanted to re- kind of reemphasize that, that as we learn these earthly um, uh, um, and political situations, it also gives us an introduction as, uh, as it works in kingdom business. Um, so it's an, you know, in- introduction, some of the words that um, that God is, that uses about building his kingdom are pertinent to building uh, of how the earthly kingdom is uh, uh, is um, is actually organized. So we can learn some things, it's not exactly, but we can learn some things is what I'm saying, is i- i- we can relate it, relate to that.
Amen. Okay, alright, anybody else want to add something? So, you know, kind of when you, 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 you read this, or when I read this, one of the things that comes to mind, you know, when it says a king sit on his throne, he windows out all evil with his eyes. It just kind of uh, uh, um, kind of, you know, make me think of, when, you know, we studying about um, whenever we go, you know, uh, before God, you know, e- even the, we go before um, you know, the judgment seat of Christ. Um, and is, you know, here's the thing, uh, what happens is um, our guilt, you know, will show on us. And you got a, you know, here it says king, well, you know, king is, pastor was pointing out, you know, that uh, but we, we saying like king, or even if um, you know, you're, we're, we're sitting before a righteous person and they're going over situations, um, you know, the Bible teaches us to know, you know, try the spirit that's be before us. So, you know, what happens is our guilt, you know, will, 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 will show on us, you know, and so here i- is saying, when a king sits on his throne, he windows out all evil with his eyes. So, you know, when, you know, what happens, you know, a lot of times, our guilt put us at a position when somebody make that eye contact, guess what? You know, our guilt, and then, you know, it, it shows on us. You know, I, 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 I did this, I can't look them in their eyes, I did this, you know, and, and, and so now what happens is, you know, because they have the uh, uh, you know, especially when uh, it's a, a man or a woman of God, and they have that spirit of discernment, you know, it, it, it makes, you know, our guilt, it, it tells on us. And, you know, they can, you know, basically when they pan the crowd, there's something, you know, and, 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 you know, the Holy Spirit speaks to them, there's something wrong there, you know, something wrong there. But when we look at this second part, when we look at verse nine, you know, because I believe these are two parts, it said, who can say, I have kept my heart pure? I am clean and without sin. Okay, so, so here's the thing. When we are at a point where we understand that I messed up, you know, okay, here's, here comes the guilt. And you, you know, we, we, you know, we show it. Um, now, we get to the point where you re- you turn over to a reprobate mind, then, you know, i- i- it goes back to, you know, like um, 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 you wanna, if you think of intellect versus, you know, um, you know, Holy Spirit. You know, so when we studying the words intellect versus having the Holy Spirit, is, is one of the things where the, you know, if God turned you over to a reprobate mind, then sinning or doing these different things, it don't matter. I could be bold with it, because I know no better. But whenever we, you know, you, you are sincere with God, and, you know, and, and here comes that guilt. That guilt shows because you feel guilty. So, what, you know, the next step there is, it takes the Holy Spirit within a leader to show them, you know, yeah. Alright, so, you know, they, they're, they're um, trying to be strong, and they trying to, you know, they holding up, but there's some guilt right there, you know, this is going on, and this is going on. And so when, you know, as we look here, it says king, but if we do it a comparison, you know, king as a leader, and we would look at with the uh, on the religious side of it, or, or the spiritual side of it, um, you know, a pastor, a, you know, or, you know, just, just even a, 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 a person of God that have the, that's full of Holy Spirit, you know, God will show things. Okay, you can deal with this person, but you can only go this far with them. You know, you can deal with this person, but you need to watch out for this, and seeing these are the things, you know, we, we see here. You gotta be, you know, um, um, we have to be able to see these things, and we have to have the Holy Spirit to see it. You know, again, because some people, you know, yeah, they, they know God, so whenever the things go wrong, they, 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 you know, they, they, they have that guilt. But there's some people who don't even know God. And, you know, and um, you know, and we may think that they do, but it takes the Holy Spirit to show us the difference. Alright, and if we, somebody want to say something? So if we look at this and, and let's look at this in the um, message, it says, leaders who know their business and care, keep a sharp eye for the shady and cheap, for who among us can be trusted to, to be always diligent and honest. So see, this right here takes it back to, you know, more like a um, uh, from a worldview of it, or, and you know, we would say a practical view of it. They're saying, you know, alright, you're a leader, you know your business, and you care, you keep a sharp eye, okay, what's going, what, what, you know, these things that's gonna come and destroy this that I'm building, you know, this is gonna destroy our building, our business if we allow this to continue to, um, you know, if, if, if this get in. Because what happens is, you know, the enemy only needs, you know, they, they, they need to be able to get uh, uh, especially when we're talking about the church, Satan need to tag along. Okay, he can't just come in, he need to tag along. And so who's he gonna tag along on? And if you're, you know, like what happens is, God blesss leaders, where leaders should be able to look and say, okay, something is wrong with brother today, so we gotta deal with this, because we can't allow this in here, because all it's gonna do is it gonna be a crack, and now you got a, a, a seam, if you will, to continue to break things up, okay? And so, um, in order to have that strong, you know, we're talking like from a, a world standpoint, a business, uh, you know, some type of organization. If you want a strong organization, you gotta have leaders that's gonna be able to see things that's trying to creep in. And the same thing with the church. Gotta have leaders that seeing, you know, especially that, that, that trust God, that Holy Spirit can show them. Okay, here's something happening, you gotta deal with it, you gotta, you know, you gotta see it, um, and you gotta deal with it. Okay, somebody want to add something? On eight and nine?
Who can say? I want to read number nine.
Okay.
Who can say, I have made my heart clean? I am pure from my sins. The only person that can really say that is receiving Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior and being filled with the Holy Spirit. That's how we become clean, have a clean heart, you know, and pure hands. Cause we can't make ourselves clean. It's only through the blood of Jesus that we've been made clean. It's only through his blood that he have made us clean, he have brought us back, we were um, alienated from God, but through the blood of Jesus, we have been made clean. We are the citizen of the kingdom of God, because of Jesus, because of the blood.
Yes. Amen. Okay, anybody else want to add something?
That's a, like a, that's like a everyday thing too, you know?
Right.
We, we clean, you know, we clean, but, we clean, but it's still some things that have to leave our lives. You know, so that's like a ongoing, a ongoing cleansing.
Right.
Yeah, every day, you know, because we still in this flesh, you know?
Yes.
So um, it's an everyday process, asking the Lord to help you and, you know, and um, creating you a clean heart and renew the right spirit in you, you know, because we, we live in this natural body and, and we are, we are people that um, we are people that are, what I want to say? We are people a lot of times that want to, you know, have our own way. We want to have our own way, but we, we have to let the Holy Spirit every day cleanse us. And the Holy Spirit will bring things back to your remembrance, to let you know, well, you did this, you know, you did that. And what we have to do is repent every day, repent every day, this is an ongoing process. You're never going to, you know, Jesus Christ sees us as a finished product. You know, but you got to work towards, you know, being clean, being clean.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen, that's right. Because there's some things, you know, that we not realizing.
Uh-huh.
And then, you know, there's things that we do realize.
Right.
Right. Okay, amen, that's great. Alright. The verse ten says, um, differing weights and differing measures, the lower detest them both. Okay, somebody got something they want, want, class, somebody want to start discussion on that?
Somebody got something going on.
Yeah, uh, uh, um, everybody check your phones. Um, somebody need to mute.
Yeah, this, uh, because this has shown up, uh, you know, uh, in various places that, you know, at the, at the marketplace, in the trades making. And it is um, if you are, you know, depending on getting a, a fair trade for what you're trading for, the, you know, we used to go to the fish market, guy had a weight. If those weights were not true, and your, your money is true, that means that you're being cheated.
Yes.
And um, there's no way of kind of figuring that out, you have to trust that when you buy, you know, two pounds of spots, it's actually two pounds of spots. You know, uh, and it, and when you enter a false witness in there, you enter that, it just wreaks havoc, because there's, you know, you start losing trust um, and, and people being cheated. So, uh, I, you know, and the, the, the thing is, is when we're making transactions, and we're making human transactions, when you start bearing false witnesses, it's just hard to trust, and it starts making it hard for everybody. And so, why this is very important.
Amen.
Amen, you're right about that, um, brother teacher, uh, when I go to the fish house, well, years ago, to get crab legs, and then they weighted crab legs, and, and um, I was cheated because they were frozen. So a couple of times I went back, I said, I want some crab leg, I want two to three pound. And they weigh them, I said, now, what you need to do is run some water on, get that ice off and weigh them again, let's see what they got. He said, we can't do that, I said, well, I can't pay you for the crab legs, because I'm not paying for ice, I'm only paying for crab legs, so mother words, the next time I went, then they say, okay, we'll do it, and then it's about three pounds, a four pound lighter than what it was. Cheated and don't realize it, you just want crab legs and whatever they tell you, and you go ahead and say, okay, that's fine. What's not ill of weed, you gonna wash this shit off? Ice off of them crab legs, I'm not paying for three pound that I'm not getting. So I agree with the pastor where he said about farts.
That first way.
That's what we have to do, we got to take the money cause they can't.
And in our relationship, you know, that's the practical piece, and then on our relationships, is that if um, if we are leaders, and somebody brings us a situation to weigh, and we weigh that situation, and for instance, maybe, you know, we're um, we're talking about an issue between two people who are disagreeing.
Yes.
Those have to be equal weights also.
Right.
So if somebody comes and you happen to like this person a little bit more than you like the other, you're not gonna be able to do that with even weights. And as a pastor and advisor, um, then uh, the population, you're, you, you, you say if um, there's a group of people that you kind of like better than the other group of people, that's gonna be hu- hard to pastor, hard to lead. Um, you know, if, you know, one person, you're a choir director, and one person gets to lead everything all the time. Because he or she is some kin to you, or that kind of deal.
Yeah.
Those are uneven weights also.
That's right.
That's true.
Showing partiality.
Showing partiality, un- yes, uneven rates, weights also.
Right.
Amen.
A lot of that, a lot of that happens too. I've seen that happen.
Well, it goes on in the government, and, and you know, uh, are you Democrat or Republican, you know? Or are you, you know, young or old, are you black or white, are you a male or female? You know, all of those, when you start treating people a certain way, because of who they are, where they come from, or that kind of thing, that's uneven weights.
It's not true.
As I said, some of these things are practical, when you, you, you go, you buy some crab legs, you want that to be honest. But when you go in front of the pastor or the elders or anybody, and you are making your case about something, you want that to be honest also.
Amen.
Absolutely.
True, right. You can do it right or wrong, do it.
Amen. Okay, anybody else want to add something today? Alright, so what we gather from this is that what God wants is, he want everybody to have a fair chance. You know, basically, and, and that's the way he treat us. We're all given the same advantages. Um, and, you know, we, we have to um, uh, you know, we advance based on our diligence, and our diligence towards him. So, you know, when you dealing with something like this, somebody else have control over, um, you know, you're talking about weights and scales, somebody else got control over that. You know, you're, you're trying to do um, the, the honest thing from your side, and your expectation is that they reciprocate that back towards you. Um, and you know, as pastor was mentioning about, um, you know, i- in the political world, you know, you see that too, you see that um, on jobs.
Alright.
You know, I'm a, I'm a hire this one because, you know, I owe there um, somebody a favor. You know, yeah, they don't have the qualifications, but, you know. And so, we see that a lot, and, you know, these are the things that um, it says, you know, the Lord detest them both. And so, um, you know.
And you, uh, a lot of times we have to go back, you know, within ourselves, you know, and make things right. We have to, you know, we have to go back, because a lot of times, you know, we going, we are going hit uh, forward, but there's really no progress in our lives, because a lot of things that we have not um, apologized for, you know, we can, you, you've got to have a, a, a apologetic heart. You know, if you, if you come into the realization and you know that you have done something that is, you know, that is against your brother, your sister, you go to them, you know, and you're making amends to them. You know, we can't walk in pride and arrogance. You know, we got to be humble, and humble ourselves to one another, and ask that person to forgive you. You know, that's the only way that we can, we can go forth and do exactly what God has called us to do. So the word of God is just showing us where we are. You know, and if we look within ourselves and not thinking that we right all the time, because none of us is right, you know? We're not right, we're only right in the eyesight of God. So, you know, with sometime, we just have to go back and redo things, I had to, I had to do a lot of that. You know, so I'm just thanking the Lord that God, that God, you know, that God showed me these things, he'll show you these things. You know, don't, don't, stop doing this, don't do that. The Holy Spirit is a teacher, it's a leader, it's a guide, it'll train you, it'll tell you. You know whether you're doing right or wrong, because the Holy Spirit will let you know. That's why it's so important to be born again of the warning of the Spirit of God. I just thank the Lord for that. Amen.
Amen, thank you for that too. Okay, alright. Any, anybody else got something?
Um, I wanted to say, um, I'm glad that that was brought out, because sometimes we don't think about um, how we're operating and doing things, and it's, you know, a lot of times we're looking at other people and saying, well, you know, I don't do that, or I wouldn't do that, and we are doing it. And so, um, it's good to see um, what detests God, what he does not like, and to really talk that out, because, you know, sometimes we can get in a rut and be doing stuff, and we're doing things that are against God. And so, I, I appreciate, you know, this particular lesson, and pastor kind of elaborating on that, and really the practical about the crab legs, because we don't see that, and sometimes we do those things ourselves, so I, to me is saying, you know, do the things that are, will please God, that is going to glorify him in your deeds, and, and walk in a way that people can see God in you, and then they will want to do the same thing.
Amen, amen.
Okay, alright, anybody else want to add something? Alright, okay, so, um, you know, with that, you know, um, if we looking at, um, you know, we get caught up in doing this, it takes us back up to the verse right here, it says, who can say, I have kept my heart pure? I am clean and without sin. So if we treat people differently, just because of who they are, um, then we, we, you know, we, we learning that, that's Um, then we, we, you know, we we learning that that's, that's, you know, that's part of sin as well. Yes. So we, we have to, um, we have to, um, be careful with that. Alright, and and you know, the thing with that is. Um, we, we have our favorites, say like that, we have our favorites, you know? You know, as as parents, parents have that favorite child, you know, and 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 it's one of the things. That you have to do to kinda work on it so that, you know, that 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 you don't. Um, show the favoritism, if you will. Um, you know, and then whenever we get out, you know, on the job. We have that, you know, if if we're in management, we got that favorite favorite employee. If we're in management, we got that favorite coworker that, you know, if if I got a project that I'm working on or something. You know, that that's, that's, uh, what we would call good, we wanna get them to help us. And then if we got something that you, you know, it's it's messy, well, I'm going to get this one because. I don't, you know, I'm not worried about this one being upset with me, but I don't want that one. So, you know, i- in everything, we can get caught up in that. And I think, um, the evangelist said that we have to have the Holy Spirit. Because that's gonna be the thing to get us around that, okay?
But, um, uh, teacher, you're right about that, but I have, you know, six children, well, I got four of us. In the house, and I got one thing that, that we have favoritism for one. But I had to explain to her, I said, look, if I had favoritism for this one. And then when it's your time, you got the same thing for me. And the one that you say I have favoritism for, sometime, you think that we do because certain things that we do. It don't, it seem like we got favoritism, but it's not. You have to complain to them, the way you look at it, it's not favoritism, it's just like something happened and this one had a chance. And it wasn't your turn, time, but come to me and my daughter, she said, well daddy, I feel like that, I said, well, I don't feel like that because. I'm not, I don't have favoritism, because if I have favoritism, that's sin against God, God let me know to love. All of my children the same, and I do, but it's got one, just think we got favoritism for this one. And it's, it's not fair, we have to talk to our children, let them know, it seemed like it's favoritism, but it's not. You got to think about, you know, how it looked to her. It doesn't, it looked like favoritism, but once I explained it to her, then she said, well, okay daddy. And you you have to, you have to put this stuff together and measure it out so they're understanding that you don't have favoritism, but. Some children, they they lack that, but it's not like that, not with my children, I I don't believe in doing that, it's, cause it's not right.
Right. And 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 you know, uh, uh, I I understand where you're going there, cause you know. Um, you know, when 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 Jalen was with us, it's kinda like, you know, Lana growing up. She thought he was getting all the favoritism, but you know, I explained to her, you know, he requires more attention.
Right. There you go.
No, just, you know, he just required it. Okay, Scott, you got something?
Yeah, um, I don't know, I'm just, I'm reminded, I mean, what did Jesus say? He said, what you do the least to the, you do unto me. We have to have that mindset, we. We can't, uh, uh, have hidden prejudices, cause he he reads our heart. He knows our heart, he knows our books, he knows what's right and what isn't right. And in our daily walk, uh, we go through tests and, uh. And we have to to pray, and we have to ask for guidance from the the helper he sent, he sent us a helper. In our spirit and, uh, to guide us through the maze of. Of where, when everybody else does something, just cause something's popular doesn't make it right. You know, if everybody's picking on that one person, somebody's gotta stand up. Because that's what Jesus did, he stood up for the least of us. And he demonstrated, he didn't just say it. Everything that Jesus, uh, did, everything he said, he did. Uh, he even loved the ones that that put the nails to his hands. Um, he he was, he was had empathy for those people. They were, they were doing, I don't know if the the one who was, you know, putting the nail through things. We think, it was like something different, he knew that something was different about Jesus than all the rest of the. Criminals that he, that they punished, you know? And, uh. Uh, he picked up on that, he picks up on. We cry out when we weep, he knows it for real, he knows if we're being fake. Cause he reads our heart. And he looks at our heart regardless, nationality, skin color, race, he looks at the heart. And we have to keep that in mind and look past, uh. Our hidden prejudices, we gotta search our heart every day and go, you know, am I doing that? You know, we gotta ask ourselves, are we, am I lining up with what God said about, you know, even the least of these? And, uh, no, I gotta do that, cause it's really easy to just go with the crowd, everybody's picking on this guy because he did this or. Said this, or, or, you know, had poor clothing or rich clothing or. Different clothing, or, you know, just had, uh, um, somebody just stood having different. But, uh, growing up, I mean, we should have already gone past that. But some people are still in high school and they still play these games. So. That's kinda how I see it.
Yes, we we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear, okay, I, I thought it was thunder and lightning, I mean, we're getting little boomers out here.
We can hear.
So, uh, you know, when it comes to weights and measures, it's not our weights and measures because we're sinners. And even though he perfectly died for all our sins, we still have to walk in what he did for us. So, when we, uh, walk through our walk, we have to ask for guidance. Every step of the way. So, uh, and it's a learning process, every day it's a learning process for me and and my wife and and. And it's not gonna stop, but it's an opportunity to do the right thing when it, when it's time.
Okay, amen. Alright, thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Alright. Okay. Alright, so let's, um. We're gonna look at verse eleven, even small children are known by their action. So, is their conduct really pure and upright? Alright, go ahead, go ahead, somebody wanna say something?
You have to teach the children how to be good. They come, they come with their their nature, they come with their sinful nature. So you have to teach them, they know how to, they know how to do little, you know, things that are not right. So you have to teach them the right way. Cause a lot of times, some of the things they do is not pure. So that's why we have to teach them, we have to teach them the ways of God. Bring them up, train them up, and bring them up in the admiration of the Lord.
That's right. Alright, somebody else wanna add something? Okay, so, um, you know, seeing this right here. It lets us know even children are not exempt from, um, you know, from 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 people. Um, making a judgment, uh, 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 towards them, so in other words, um, you know, small children, you know. It it's kinda like when you in, you're in the, um, you're in the store. Um, you, you know, you're in Walmart somewhere, and you see someone coming with a child, and that child is falling, not having a fit. In your mind, you already go ahead and make a decision about that child, right? You know, you know, in 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 some cases, you make a decision about the parent. Um, you know, and so, we hear this is letting us know, even small, even children. You know, they're gonna be known for their actions, you know, whenever, um, kids are in school, and this is important, you know, this is another important reason why. You know, as you're saying, we need, we gotta train that child up. You get a child in school, and that child go in, you know, kindergarten, first grade, or, you know, one of those grades, and they get in there and they cut up. They bad. Well, guess what happens with the teachers, it's time to go to the next grade, those teachers share those things. The next teacher come up, their expectation is for this child to be bad. And sometimes we can get caught up in situations where they're not getting the best from the teacher. Because the teacher already made a judgment, a call against them. You know? And, and so, you know, and this, I see this as teaching the parents. That, you know, even your small child can be known by their action.
Right.
So is their conduct really pure and upright, so here we gotta, you know, uh, uh, um, because. You know, you you, you could see some kids, and they seem to be respectful and well mannered and. You know, around the parents or on this one occasion. And then eventually, you know, when they really let it show, and you're you're shocked. But see, this right here is telling us, even children are known by their action. And so that's important, why we have to raise them up the way they need to go, you know, get them in the environment, in, you you know, uh, uh, you know. If we think about, um, you know, in the store, get them in that environment, get them in an environment. And, uh, so that they can deal with people older than they are, so that you, you know, so that you can make sure that they're trained. You know, to handle themselves in the right manner, because, you know, even with children. They can get caught up in the the different weights. If, if, um, you know, if if, and you know, the, uh, the, the, I say. Like the old, older folk would say, you know, that's a biggie child. And see, and they didn't really want nothing to do with them when they say that. They didn't want nothing to do with them, they, you know, they, if they had something, you know, they wanna share with some other kids, and they see that one. They just hold on to it. Because it's like, you know, I don't wanna do nothing for them because, you know, they're 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 not respectful and. And so, that's the thing where, you know, we have to work on with our kids. It don't just stop there, it travels with them, it travels with them. You know, five years later, and they see that child, and that's the first thing they think about. You know?
Amen.
And you know, it it happens with adults, but I think what, you know, you know, what? You know, the author here is trying to get us to understand is, it's not only with adults, it's with small kids, it's with kids too.
Amen, you got to teach them.
Right.
You gotta teach. When you love your, when you love your children, you'll teach your children. And you won't let them, you know, you won't let them do a lot of, do wrong things. If they do wrong things, you bring them in and you correct them, we have to correct our children. Like, you know, and parents nowadays, they really don't do that, they just let the children, you know, do kinda like how they wanna do. You know, but we have to discipline our children because discipline is love. You know, because what, and you have to realize that you hurting them. You are hurting them, if you're not, if you're not that parent that love your child and teach your children, they're gonna be marked.
That's right.
They're gonna be marking, you know, when they get up, a man or a woman, you know, they're they're not gonna change. Those deeds is gonna still be there.
That's right.
We just have to, we have to, that's one, that's a requirement of parents. You know, when you get a child, you might be seventeen years old, you know, you still can't, you can't do what you used to do.
That's right.
Got a child now, you a parent, okay, you can't keep going out with your girlfriends, hanging out, you got to take care of that baby. So we have to train and teach our children. That's the truth.
Okay.
I taught mine.
Amen.
Bring them too, with a belt. They'll listen to that.
Verse twelve says, ears that hear and eyes that see. Okay, class, somebody wanna start discussion on verse twelve? Eyes that see, the Lord has made them both.
Thank you, Lord.
So, so, one of the ways we can look at that is. God has just equipped us with what we needed. What we need, okay? Um, you, so, and this is focused on ears and eyes, you know, you know what, it's not saying. It's not saying anything about mouth. So it 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 come, you know, I kinda look at it as, you know, that it's best for us to listen. And watch.
Amen.
If we listen and watch, we'll learn a lot.
Yep.
Okay, um, and so, uh, e- e- even if we look back where it says, even small children are known by their actions. We look and watch kids, you know, the different weights, different measures. If you listen and you watch, you you you'll see, you know, you get to see things that that, okay. This guy here, when that one came up, you know, he had, his bag of shrimp was bigger than this guy's bag of shrimp, and it weighed the same thing. Um, you know, so by listening and watching, you hear the conversations, and you understand what's going on. Okay, and then it's basically the same thing, you know, we look at the king sit on his throne. See, and so we can look at, uh, several of these verses, and we can see that there, if we just stop, listen. If we stop and we listen and we watch. We get to learn things and understand things, and, um, and and so. When we look at these sayings here in Proverbs. We see that's basically what, um, King Solomon did. He listened and he watched, because these sayings are based upon observations, and in order to observe, dogs. In a, in order to observe things, you gotta be listening, and you gotta be watching, okay? Alright.
Uh, I wanted to say, teacher, that, um, the enemy really want our children.
Yes.
He wants to indoctrinate our children with a lot of, with a lot of death, a lot of killing. You know, those those games, a lot of, a lot of, all they do all day long, some of them, is play those games. You know, there's no boundaries no more in the home, long as the children don't get, uh, where the mom is, disturb the mom, disturb the dad. You know, they are in good shape, and children now really are raising themselves. Really true. You know, because the mom and the dad, they don't wanna be bothered, especially if they work, oh man, I'm tired. You know, yeah, give them the game, let them go and play the games, you know, they don't have family, um, devotion. We have to have devotion with our children, we used to have devotion with our children when they were small, they would be laughing, but they was in that devotion. But, um, we, and we have to realize how when, when, uh, Moses came to get. The children of Israel, bring them into the land of, uh, Canaan, Pharaoh wanted to keep the children. That's right. Cause he wanted to indoctrinate the children, you know, but Moses say, I know, you're not keeping our children. We taking our children too with us, you know, so we have to really take our time, and I know sometime, the parent be tired, you know, but. Like me. But, yeah, but you ain't got no children, so, you know. You just have, we we just have to take our time and do what's right. You know, with our children, cause our children is a part of us, they are our inheritance, you know, they gonna carry our name on.
Right.
They gonna carry the family legacy on, so we have to really take our time and and train our children. Amen. They are our inheritance.
Amen. Amen. Okay, anybody else wanna add something? Okay, anybody else wanna add something?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
I may, I may have mentioned this before, um, and it's a true story. But, uh, I remember this was this big bully, you know, everybody was scared of him. And, I don't know, it was something, something I did at school, I don't know what it was, but my dad spanked me, right? And. I overheard the bully say, you know, I wish my dad would spank me, you know? He, he doesn't care what I do. And it made me look at my dad a little different after that, like, you know, he does love me, he does care and, and. And the Lord disciplines us, cause he guides us with a, you know, steady hand. You know, don't go that way, tap, tap, go, go this way. And, uh, you know, it's a comfort, it's comforting, and these are comforting. So, uh, that, that's kinda resonating with me right there. And the, uh, eyes to see and ears to hear. Might have to do with spiritual eyes and spiritual ears. And the mouth, like you said, the mouth wasn't mentioned. Jesus mentions the mouth. He says, you know, what goes in the mouth doesn't defile a man, but what comes out of the mouth defiles a man. And all these things just sort of resonate with me, you know? When, when we think about those kinda things. That, you know, how blessed we are on our daily walk and we have the opportunity to, uh, do good for, you know. Each other and, uh, like, and love ourselves too, we get that in there. But, uh, it's, it's powerful. I mean, it's wonderful and powerful that, that we're inher, you know, we have an inheritance.
Thank you for that. All right, let's see. Says, do not love sleep or you will grow poor. And you will have food to spare.
Yes, sir.
All right, class, somebody wanna start discussion on that? Y'all remember the, one of the, the sayings in school, early bird always get the worm? You know, um, basically, um, you know. If you wanna stay in bed, you know, eh, um, you're, you're missing out. You, you know, and, 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 and pretty much where this is going is, you know, um, lazy versus diligent. And we have, you know, we've come across, um, several sayings already dealing with being lazy, you know? And so this is where this going, you love sleep, so basically, you know, if you're gonna be lazy, um, you're, you're gonna grow poor. You know? You, 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 you know, um, you're, you're focusing on resting relaxation. And you're not focusing in on, um, you know, um, um, you know, trying to, um, better yourself. This, 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 this moves beyond just money. You know, if you're gonna be lazy, your health's gonna be bad.
That's right.
Just gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt you all the way around, it's, it's basically here, okay? All right, and it says, stay awake and you will have food to spare. So basically, if you, um, gonna be diligent about what you're doing. You're diligent and you, 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 you awake and you're alert. Then guess what? Not only are you gonna have what you need, but you gonna have enough to spare. You gonna be able to share with someone else. You, you have to be, you know, you have to stay alert and you have to be, you know, uh, diligent about what you do. You know, eh, because, you know, when we look at about love sleep, that, that, and I, I also, um. Kind of fall in line with you on a job and you just doing enough to get by. Or you, you, you know, you, you dragging. But where we should be is, we're not doing enough to get by. We going above and beyond. And then that's when you get, um, enough to spare, that you can share, um, you can be a blessing to somebody else.
Wake up artificially.
There are a lot of people, um, uh, teacher that would, you know, like to have what others have. But if you wake up in the morning, you won't see them beside you. And when you go to bed at night, you know, they're, they're already gonna be. So, the thing is, is that, you know, uh, uh, people don't realize there's a, a, a direct relationship with your diligence. Um, I, I've had young folks and stuff, and you know, that. I try to tell them, look, I'm, I'mma come get you. I try to train them. I'mma come get you at this time. And then I'll wait and then I'll leave and they called me, but Mr. Andy, are we gonna work today? I said, we were gonna work at seven. And you come back and give me no. And the thing is, is that I'm just training them and they, they think it's hard. They get mad at me. They mad at me right now, so. Um, but the thing is, is that, you know, in business, when you move, when you move. And if you don't get up, if you can't get up and get it, you will not have all those things you wanna have.
That's right.
But folks think that they can wake up at ten o'clock and, and work a little bit. Not have an extra job or not do an extra gig and have extra. There are people who believe that. But then, you know, they don't see, you know, folks getting up at five thirty in the morning. Five thirty, what you talking about? You know, some, sometime you have a half a day work done before somebody even get to sleep out there. But yet they looking at you sideways. Why are you at that? Why they did that? Well, the, when we get to, uh, Proverbs thirty-one, the, the, the. That woman got up early in the morning before day. Selected land. Sold her stuff, meaning that she was in business. And nobody, you know, they read that and stuff and, uh, you know, it's like go in one ear and go out the other. She has several things going on. And you look at the, you know, the, I used to say, if you, you look at the, you know, where the, um. You know, the cradle of civilization where it said, you had the Euphrates and the Tigris and you had three different rivers. And I believe in your life, you had to have certain different rivers of activity. And if you want more, you know, you've gotta multiply more, you gotta make more. Some folks got the same relationships they had last year. And expect a different inflow. Now, if you didn't go to another river, you gonna have the same water.
Amen.
So the other night, I just joined another, um, organization and stuff, um, because. I do fundraising for a lot of organizations, okay? But so if you don't know nobody to call. Cause you sitting there and, eh, you know, and you haven't made any different relationships. But you're trying to get more things coming to your church or more, you know, people are saying the harvest is plentiful. What? But the labels of. All right, so how do you do evangelism if you ain't talking to nobody new? If you go to the gas tank to go get gas, or you go to the grocery store and you can't hardly speak to nobody. You know, I don't get it. That you, you, you know, the S T P, the same ten people you knew last year, but you planning to grow the church. So, so, that, you know, that's the deal about this diligent piece is that. If you, if you want more, there's an equation. You gotta put more effort. More diligence and that's for the church and it's for individuals.
Amen.
Folks want a healthy heart, don't wanna walk, don't drive up, almost get a ticket parking in the fire zone. I saw it today. I saw it today.
I'm guilty.
How you gonna walk with Jesus if you don't never do no walking?
Lord, that must help me, Lord.
It's an opportunity to walk with him, to build up your stamina. And to also, you know, thank God for these legs, cause some people can't walk. Yeah, so I, and it's, and let me tell you what, there always a parking lot away from the place. You ain't got no circle that thing five times. You can go out there. If you go away from the hospital, go away from food line, you go out there, you can always find. A parking lot and ain't nobody banging up your car. And you will always, you know, then you're building up your heart, but. Means you being diligent. You, you know, get up and go to the store early and stuff. You gonna get the freshest stuff. When they putting it out. It's the whole deal. And somewhere down the line, um, you know. We've got to, we've got, we've got to learn to, to show diligence. We want God to be on time. Want God to be dependable. Want God to go ahead and move, move quickly, God. And we moving like snails. And so, I mean, we really gotta be diligent about the things, you know, the things of God, thing, you know, be diligent, be businesslike. E- even Jesus mentioned that. He said, well, didn't you know I'd be about my father's business, business? Yeah, that I'll be making transactions, that I'm acting businesslike. And that doesn't mean lackadaisical. And so the good is, is that we need to be diligent about everything that we're planning, about our healths, um, about our study. Um, about our outreach, those kinds of things, um, because Christ is coming back.
Amen. Amen.
I'm, I'm reminded of, uh, a quote from, uh, Ben Franklin. And it's a little rhyme that I learned growing up and. Early to bread, early to rise makes a man healthy, wealthy, wise. And, uh, sometimes when you hear a little rhyme or, or maybe teach. You know, children, a rhyme, it sorta helps. Change your mindset or, or, you know. If it's, if it's something that you grew up and you listen to and then it stays with you and you're adulthood. It, it's something that will resonate with you when you're, you know, out of, uh. Options like, well, things, this isn't working and this isn't working, but, uh, let me try this. Let me go to bed early and get up early and see what. What, uh, what occurs and, and, uh. So a lot of that, what, what Andy was saying about, you know, get up early, good, in, in a lot of, uh, aspects. And, uh. But everybody's different and everybody, you know, somebody's gotta be the night watchman, some, somebody's gotta be the, the, early righ, early riser. The farmer, you know, and get up early, milk the cows and stuff, so it's, it's. It depends on, uh, your character and how you raised and, and your purpose in God's plan.
All right, anyone else wanna add something?
And you know, the pastor was talking about, um, loving sleep, you know, and I think he was explaining it on the. On the practical side and plus the spiritual side. You know, because if we are, we, sometime we're sleeping in the spirit. You know, we're sleeping in the spirit and God want more out of us. Because he gave us the talents, he gave us the, uh, abilities to do more. And sometime we just wanna do just a little bit, you know? But, uh, as he was talking, uh, he required more out of us. You know, because we are the church, we are the church of the living God and God has assigned us. With the finished work and we go, we'll go forth and tell people about the finished work, so we can be sleepover here. Whatever God is telling us to do, you know, we have to get busy, do it and don't be waiting on somebody else. Well, let's just so and so do it, or let brother so and so do it. You know, and God is calling for you, cause he's ready, he's ready to use you. And a lot of times we be, we, we, we sleep in the spirit. And God want to do more in our lives, so we can do more in our communities and our churches and our schools. You know, but if we love sleep, we can't, we can't do that, you know? Because the sleepy man is an unstable man. So we don't wanna be unstable. So we want to, um, you know, we wanna be ready for whatever task God has given us to do. Because he's, he's, he will give you whatever you need in order to fulfill their assignment that he put on your life. So we have to go forth, we have to go forth, we must go forth. Because a lot of people, life is depending on us not being, you know, being, um, awake. Being awake. A lot of people's lives is, is depending on that. So we have to wake up in the spirit. Wake up, wake up, it's time to get up. You've been so sleepy, you've been sleeping too long. Time to wake up, we can go forth and do what is the Lord God.
That's some good teachings.
Kingdom work is, 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 uh, is a big responsibility. But the Holy Spirit will give you just what you, you need in order to do what God is calling us to do. And he's calling for more. We're living in the last days, he's calling for more. We just can't, we just can't be satisfied clapping our hands and saying hallelujah and nobody else is, you know. Nobody else is coming into the kingdom of God. We just got to wake up. It's time for me to wake up. I ain't talking about nobody else, I'm talking about me. Amen.
Yeah, well, and I, I think that one of the things, and I've gotten to pray over this, cause I, you know. It's tough for me to see young people, um, or any person and stuff, like in the middle of the day. Um, coming to the store with pajamas and slides on. And a bonnet. I'm working with that. You know, maybe they just, you know, maybe they, they millionaires, they only do nothing. Or they don't have any responsibility and maybe they psyching me out, but. So I, I, you know, and I, and I used to, you know, tell my little guys and stuff, where I said, you know, please don't come. Over here to work with no flip flops, cause we gonna work. When you come, we working. Come looking like you gonna work. And, and I used to, you know, do same thing at work, you, you know, there's, you, you gotta have a belt on, cause you can't hold your pants. With one hand. Try to hold a weed eater with another.
That's right.
That's just not gonna get. And I just felt like, you know, and I know that, uh, young people have styles and stuff like that. There was a time that we did styles, but. My style didn't interfere with my work. And so, you know, maybe do that on your day off and stuff like that, but when you're day off, uh, you know, there's some things that we need to adjust. One of the last things, we were watching the other night and stuff and we're talking about, you know, um, you know, Jesus' last days. And one of the last lessons he told his disciples, can you, can you stay awake with me? You know, when I heard, um, a, a, uh, preacher Mona. They, you know, when Mona, they, she was, she was talking like that, that's what it remind me of, is that y'all stay awake. All that Jesus has done. Can we, can we sleep while he dying? And sometimes, you know, I guess that's why he calls us children, cause you know, sometime, I know that, um. Um, you know, I used to get frustrated when my children be sleeping and I'm working and stuff. And, you know, I'm like, yeah, yeah, and you know, I'm like, y'all sleeping on what you doing? You know, can y'all do, can y'all make a move? And, and I remember, you know, at work, I'm like. You know, I remember, uh, out, you know, out work, I said, now, I'm, have worked. You know, maybe ten hours that day. I go and get up to go check on my group homes. and there'll be people who just got to work, and they got covers on and asleep. I said, nah, I done battled with people to make sure y'all got a job. And y'all coming to this job to sleep, and you want me to pay you? And they didn't know I had insomnia, so any given day, I might be out there at three o'clock in the morning, and I go in there and ring the fire alarm. Say, why are you jumping up? Why are you jumping up and down? When you come down, you fired. Don't you stay in the air, you good. Yeah. Because it made no sense that other people were working. And then you gonna sleep on that situation. And so, and that's the same way in the church, you know, again, spiritually, you know, is that, you know, you, you know, church is nowhere to come get your nap.
My God.
It's, it's a time for all, 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 all hands on deck, it's warfare.
Yes, yes.
Warfare. And folks want church to be as comfortable, they want everything to be comfortable. Everything got to be, the, the temperature got to be right, and my chair got to be comfortable, the lighting's got to be this right here. And you, then, you know, when you in a war, and all that's got to be right.
Right.
And folk laying back, and they laying back enough to go to sleep. You know, I done stayed up all these hours. You know, then I get up again and read over that again to make sure I'm doing it right, make sure I'm saying it right, ask God, you know, and, and, and going back, and then I said, look, I just need, you know, uh, you know, this segment on our Sunday, on our week, I need you to be with. And folk, folk can't get in one day. They keep getting one day of spiritual work.
My God.
That's too much, too hard.
Right, and so, but, you know, the deal is that they wanna come to, you know, you wanna come to the altar and want God to do a quick work.
I like that. Amen.
And so, on the practical, on the spiritual, that does not work. And if we want more, we gotta plant more.
That's right.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, class, anybody else got something they wanna add?
Can I just read this right here, what the pastor was talking about, about them sleeping?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's coming from Mark, um, Mark fourteen, and I'm going to go down to, um, the thirty-fifth verse, "He went a little farther and fell on the ground and prayed that if it were possible that hour might pass from him. And he said, 'Abba, Father, all things are possible for you. Take this cup away from me, nevertheless, not what I will, but what you will.' Then he came and found them sleeping." My Lord Jesus, help us. And said to Peter, Simon, "Are you sleeping? Could you not watch one hour? Watch and pray lest you enter, enter temptation."
Yes.
"The spirit indeed is willing, but the flesh is weak. Again he went away and prayed and spoke the same words, and when he returned he found them sleep again."
Yes, sir.
Help us, Holy Spirit. "Found them sleeping again, for their eyes were heavy, and did that, they did not know what to answer him. Then he came the third time and said to them, 'Are you still sleeping? Sleeping and resting. It is enough, the hour has come, behold, the Son of Man is being betrayed into the hand of sinners. Rise, let us go, let us be going. See, my betrayer is at hand." Sleeping, spiritual sleeping. Lord, help us, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Now, I tell you who won't sleep. Satan and Judas won't sleep.
Come on now. That's right.
He's right about that.
Amen.
Sadducees and the Pharisees and the Romans won't sleep.
They don't sleep. They get the job done.
Getting the job done.
Well, Father, please, just mercy on us.
Help us, dear Jesus.
See, to tell you the difference is, is remember that when the, um, you know, the Roman soldiers were afraid when Jesus got away? Because they thought they were gonna get killed for being asleep.
That's right.
What if we felt the same way, that?
Oh, Jesus.
What if we felt the same way about our post and what we're doing?
Yes, Lord, wake us up, wake us up. No sleeper lies.
Whatever he tell us to do, we do it. Amen. Okay, all right, class, anybody else got something they wanna add? Don't go to sleep, now wake up. Okay, all right, well, if there's nothing else, um, you know, we're gonna, um, make a good lesson tonight, and, um, uh, you know, enjoy the input. Um, and, um, you know, at this time, Pastor, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Lord.
Okay, we thank everybody for, um, being here, we got a good crowd tonight. Um, uh, thank God for our, our teacher for leading a great discussion, and all the other teachers.
Amen.
Everybody who brought out their Bible, and, um, brought out something that would not have been said if you had not been there, so we thank God for that. We opened up, a lot of things going on. I'll just start out by saying I left the hospital today, had two young people, um, incidents that happened this week. Um, I had, uh, one of the, the, um, the families of a friend that I had all the way since childhood. Have you heard about the hit and run down in Myrtle Beach this weekend? That fa- that family is from, you know, part of that family is from Whiteville.
Yeah, I heard about it.
Right, he lost his, oh, oh, he lost his son. And, um, they were down, they're from Kansas City. Uh, some of the, you know, they have some connections here in Whiteville, but the family, the way I understand it, is really not, not that close. So I went down, we had prayer with him, and, uh, just kind of made a donation, because they're gonna be here for three weeks in prime season. Uh, they were just down here for a family reunion, and now they gotta figure out how to stay down here while they try to get their son's body back to Kansas City. While the daughter who al- was also hit is in intensive care at Grand Street. So they, they got a handful. We did have prayer with them, and talked to the chaplains up there, and Reverend JR Matthews said that he's a chaplain, he'll be checking on them, and I'll be checking on them, so y'all pray for them, and pray that I, that I'll be standing in the right way to help that family. Um, then, a- also, um, 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 the young brother had an accident in Cedar Branch, twenty-one years old. They operated on him, on him today, and, um, he is not showing a whole lot of activity right now. He's in intensive care. His family, uh, is up at the hospital now as we speak. And, uh, we thank God for, um, Pastor Vanessa for being there with the family today. And then I was able to join them a little later, um, and, uh, they're just in prayer, so we need to keep that family in prayer. So there's a lot going on. Now, we open up the, the, the prayer lines for other situations, and if you can call those folks out, we'll, we'll go from there.
Yeah, one of my friends, uh, her daughter is in intensive care in Charleston. Uh, she's fighting for her life, she just lost her husband. Uh, Maria is her sister, I don't know her sister's name, but, um, she really need, uh, the church to be praying for her, because she's going through a lot right now.
Amen, amen.
And my cousin, um, Tia, please pray for her and her family. There's some things that's going on that shouldn't be going on, so just pray for her.
My brother John, keep him in prayer, in the hospital.
All right. Amen. Someone else?
I would like to put my sister Diane in for comfort.
Amen. Go, go ahead, someone.
Like to put my friend, um, Alicia, that's, um, needs healing. And, um, she's, she's really going through a lot. And, um, and I want to thank the church ladies, Vicky and all the ladies in the pantry that gave her a big box. We, um, I dropped the box off Monday, and she was really thankful. She said, she so appreciates it.
Amen.
Put my Aunt Bess in, because she just lost her granddaughter.
Her great.
Her great-granddaughter.
Amen.
Uh, prayer for Pastor Odell, and, and, uh, for his, that ringing to stop, and for healing. I'm gonna say a level in that it, it, uh, completes itself, you know, within the hour.
Amen.
Good things, and I'm speaking it out.
Amen. Someone else?
Put Pastor Anderson and his family and his son and his new wife, and put them in prayer too.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for praying for them, you know, newer ways need that.
Amen.
Us, us older ways too.
I'd like to request prayer for, um, my sister-in-law for continued healing, um, for, um, our niece-to-be, for, um, traveling mercy. Um, also for all of our children, um, and for, uh, Sister Judy, and, uh, for our church family and our leadership, and our, all of our pastors.
Amen.
Amen.
I'm asking for a continuous prayer for my daughter, um, healing, um, for myself, continued healing and covering, and for our church family.
Amen.
Amen.
Pray for, uh, Apostle Commander, honey.
Yeah, Apostle Commander, let's keep him in prayer, he lost his, uh, brother last Thursday.
I want to put a coworker, um, Christie, who is, um, um, for healing, and she's in, um, at M U S C in ICU.
Amen.
I want prayer for my nephews too, um, for salvation. And, um, yeah, and all, all my family members, for, um, you know, them to have a more enrichment in, in, in the Lord, to draw closer to the Lord. And for the church, and all the leaders in the church, and the children, and the youth, and, uh, churches, the universal churches everywhere. Evangelism, and evangelism.
I also want to add, um, my husband and our daughters.
Yeah.
Amen.
Um, I would like to add, um, Sister Ametha, and, um, Ms. Garnell, Sister Garnell, and their family.
Amen. Someone else?
I would like to, um, add, or just pray for deliverance for the men in my family, and, um, protection. And also, um, for my, for my marriage, and for different situations, households that I, I go into that they're dealing with, I would like to put them in, in the prayer circle as well.
Amen. Amen. Someone else? Anyone else? Okay. Um, I'd like to, uh, put, uh, Amber Bellamy in the prayer circle. And I put my daughter, Ashley, and all of the rest of our family in, uh, in the prayer circle. Um, um, like to just ask for re- uh, restoration and elevation for our teacher. Would, um, just, um, God will complete, continue to lift him in his teaching, ministry, and other things that he's doing. Um, so let us, let us pause in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, God, we thank you, dear Lord, for this word. Uh, we thank you, dear God, for Ramo Word. Uh, dear God, it's in context and now, a, a, and a word that we can use right now in our families, diligence and, uh, and, and, and wisdom, and all those things that we could place in, in right now, and we don't have to wait. Uh, we can do that tonight, start working on it. Uh, so we thank you for that.
Thank you.
We thank you for even the conviction, the word of, the word of conviction, of letting us know the things that we need to do. Also, the, the, the word of confidence, knowing that their promises. Know, and that there's, um, and if we will follow what God has us to do, and we're obedient, we know there's, there's, uh, awards and rewards.
Thank you.
And we thank you for that.
Thank you.
We thank you for your faithfulness.
Yes.
We thank you, that, dear Lord, that we can, um, uh, pray together, and we can touch and agree on the things that we said, on the healing, on deliverance. Um, dear Lord, on, on the, the power, on the, the intercession, dear God. Um, that, that, dear Lord, that angels being dispatched, all those things. We can agree on, dear God, and that makes heaven move.
Yes, Father.
And so we thank you for that.
Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus.
We just thank you, Father, we honor your holy name, uh, we honor holiness.
Yes, Lord.
We apply holiness to our own selves, Father.
Yes, Father.
You want us holy because you holy. And we thank you for, um, not only for the blessings, dear Lord, but for the correction. We thank you, because correction brings sanctification. Nobody wants to be corrected these days, that means nobody wants the sanctification. But I want to be corrected, Father.
Yes, Lord.
So that I can say and stand in certain circumspect, dear God. Uh, that I can approach the throne with boldness, Father. Holy boldness, dear Lord, but a respectful boldness.
Yes, Lord.
Understanding that I'm a child of the King. Dear Lord, we just thank you, dear God, for you being the King and Lord over our lives.
Yes, Lord.
Submit ourselves right now in the name of Jesus. We just submit ourselves, we present our bodies as living sacrifices. But we want them to be holy and acceptable, Father, before the throne, dear God, we just thank you, God. And that we will be renewed even as we leave, uh, this call. Father, that there will be an increased holiness even in our households, dear God. And so just bless these vessels, Father, these clay vessels, dear God. Make us usable, not only usable, but, dear God, make us powerful in this world. And we thank you, Father. So, dear Lord, when you give us power, we will definitely have power. Uh, we don't have to have the majority, Father, all we need is to have you. We just thank you, Father, for insight. We thank you, dear God, uh, for vision. And we thank you, dear God, for the provision, uh, dear Lord, that you have already laid out before us. Now, dear Lord, we just thank you for all the healing that's going on. We thank you for, I heard somebody say something about salvation. I believe that heaven gets excited about salvation.
Yes, Lord.
Let us be thirsty for salvation, dear God. That means that we're thirsty for soul winning. And, and be happy that we get a chance to, to win souls, dear God. We, we know what it did for us. We should be really glad about what it'll do for somebody else, dear Lord. So we thank you, God.
Thank you, Lord.
We just ask you, dear God, right now, um, to anoint us anew with a fresh anointing.
Yes, Lord.
And when you done all these things, we'll be quick to give you the honor and the praise because you already have the power. Uh, we thank you, God. All these things and all other things, we ask in the precious name of Jesus. Name of the Father, Son and Holy Ghost. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
All right. Well, it's good to, to talk and see people and everything on Zoom and on YouTube. Thank y'all so much for being on.
Amen.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Shalom. Nothing needed, nothing broken. Amen.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good evening, everybody.